Good morning. It is nine AM and I'll call to order the Board of Directors Special Meeting Workshop for Wednesday, April 24th. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Present.
Director Duff. Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Here.
And President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have corn.
Seeing that all five of us are present, we'll skip item three, moving on to item four, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Sewell not online.
It's an agenda item. Are you taking those counter or?
Um, we can address it on when we get to the item. Perfect. Uh, what item was it?
Just something.
Okay. Perfect. We'll move on to items for discussion. Item five, Chrome six regulation discussion. Steph?
Uh, yes. Thank you, President Sewell. Uh, as you know, there was a public hearing by the state water board that unanimously approved the maximum contaminant level for chrome six or hexavalent chromium for 10 parts per billion. This was expected. We've asked our consultant to give a quick update and how we're going to proceed moving forward. Chad? I know you have a presentation. Good morning.
Indeed. Good morning, folks. Thanks for, uh, for having us. I'm joined by my colleague Julia Kaplan here. Glad to share a brief update with respect to what's happened with the hexavalent chromium MCL. So let me just step through that quickly. So the, the key thing to note is that, uh, just this last week, California State Water Resources Control Board did approve finalizing the 10 microgram per liter or part per billion MCL for hexavalent chromium. You'll recall historically, US EPA has a 100 microgram per liter MCL for total chromium and California has had a longstanding 50 microgram per liter MCL for total chromium. This 10 microgram per liter MCL is, uh, effectively the same as what was previously put in place in 2013 and moved forward in implementation in 2014 and challenged legally, uh, and was then rescinded, uh, but has now been re-proposed and, uh, the board has moved forward in putting this ahead now. Um, and so the next steps, kind of legally, Division of Drinking Water and State Water Resource Control Board will implement it by filing with the Office of Administrative Law. They intend to do so by, June of this year, June 15, and that will then come out of that office as approved and filed with the Secretary of State. Division of Drinking Water has communicated they expect the regulation to be in effect October 1st of this year. So then there are both monitoring and compliance schedules that follow from that point. The, the first of that, uh, just to give you a big picture overview, I just took a snapshot of the slide presentation they included last week. The key attributes of the ems of the rule are again, the 10 microgram per liter MCL. Noted is 10. It is not 10.0. Uh, so for the purposes of rounding, we get laboratory reports back down to the 10th of a microgram. So 10.4 is in compliance on a running annual average basis. Uh, 10.5 is not. The compliance, uh, calculation is based on a running annual average of quarterly samples at all of the entry points into the distribution system. So there's details here about the detection limits and methods for monitoring. They have included effectively the same best available technologies as they had previously ion exchange, reduction, coagulation, filtration, and reverse osmosis. There are some nuances that are different this time for public notification and consumer confidence reports. Because this final rule, uh, includes for the first time ever in a state, California state specific drinking water, uh, MCL, a compliance schedule. And so I'll, I'll spend just a little bit of time talking about what that means for you all. So they included this in the final rule where depending upon system size, large, large at the top, medium sized in the middle, and then small at the bottom, based on service connections, 10,000 or more service connections, as you have in your case on that tap line. You have two years to comply, uh, with this in terms of maintaining chromium six concentrations less than 10 micrograms per liter on a running annual average basis, starting October 1st of 2026. So two years. Now, this is better than no compliance schedule, but it is not as long as the typical federal implementation schedule for new drinking water regulations. Note that there is some activity in the California State Legislature, um, that we're tracking that may change these dates, but that is not yet final and, uh, we'll, we'll track if there's any outcomes of that that will be, uh, important for you all. So the monitoring schedule is, is then important. So monitoring schedule is different than compliance schedule. Just like any new MCL, you have to start monitoring within six months of the effective date. So that means by April 1st of next year, you have to start taking compliance samples for hexavalent chromium at all of the entry points to the distribution system. So that's, our recommendation will be that you purposefully schedule sampling on April 1st of 2025. And we suggest that simply because while you could take those samples as soon as October 1st, as soon as you take those samples, those then trigger next steps, which we would advise you take the available time to do all the work that's going to be necessary to inform what comes next. So the things that happen coming next, once you trigger an MCL of 10 micrograms per liter, within 30 days, you have to issue tier two public notice for the MCL exceedances occurring prior to the compliance date. And there's some language that the state has, uh, proposed that you have to include. Within 90 days of that exceeding the MCL, um, but not out of compliance, you have to submit a compliance plan to the Division of Drinking Water and they have some prescriptive things in there, but basically it says, what are you going to do to comply with this MCL and what are the steps to do it? What's the timeline and, um, funding and operations, all that? The following year of exceeding that MCL, you have to include language in your consumer confidence report for that purpose. And then obviously before implementing any new or modified treatment or blending, you have to submit an operations plan to the Division of Drinking Water. So the, the proposed language is important and I don't necessarily want to, uh, I won't read this off for you, but the tier two notice, you gotta issue this, just like any other public notice, getting it into the public, uh, eye through, um, you know, basically newspaper postings and there's some, some mailing requirements. You have to include language about the origin of hexavalent chromium. So that language is on the left there. And then in the consumer confidence report on the right, um, you have to describe the health effects, uh, for the increased risk of cancer, associated with hexavalent chromium. Now, the bottom right is the unique language that has never been put out before, which is stating that if you trigger the MCL before the compliance period is expired, you have to state it's been detected exceeding the MCL, but while not a violation yet, uh, you're working to address it. And so I put that out there. So you have in mind, what does this overall timeline look like? With the effective date of October 1st this year and the compliance deadline of October 1st of 26, it's a pretty compressed schedule. And the vast majority of water systems with greater than 10,000 service connections are going to struggle with being able to comply with this. But there's some ways to, uh, to afford some additional time by, uh, different, using different water resources, different well supplies, different blending strategies, uh, and, and hopefully that's, that's part of what we're working on to support you and your staff. I've put in here this trigger the MCL point where it all depends upon the concentration of hexavalent chromium in your well supplies. So because it's a running annual average of quarterly samples, you take your quarterly results, you take your first one and you divide it by four because you would assume that you have four quarters. So if you have greater than 40 micrograms per liter in a well, you'd be out of compliance with your reverse sample. It would take two samples to exceed it if you're between 20, between 20 and 40. Three samples to exceed if you're between 13.4 and 20, and obviously take four quarterly samples if you're between 10 and, and 13.4. The majority of your wells are either below the MCL or just a few are in this 10 to 13 range with one or two in the 13 to 20 range. And so depending upon how those well supplies are utilized in this very important timeframe of 25 and 26, it may allow you some additional time for both communication requirements and the implementation of, of blending and treatment, uh, and different well utilization strategies. So that's the, the, the main update on the regulatory front. I'll simply just draw your attention again, reminding you all about the wells. This is your staff's graph of this that we've shown and shared with you all. You, you shared it internally before. Well, uh, 24, 27, 29, and 37 being of concern with some historical average results above the MCL. You'll even note that this graph still said draft. We, we did put these into some time series. So we took all the data that you shared with us since 2014 through 24. These are active wells. And it's those same wells that are pretty stable with their concentrations. Now, there are some that need a little bit more investigation, uh, to discern if we have concerns with them. But it's also important to note, if I go to the next slide, the inactive wells, that have been inactive for different reasons, 28 most notably, and even 30 that's not on here, may be, um, usable for purposes of supplying water without chromium six compliance concerns.
Chad, can I stop you on this slide real quick?
This was the landing point. Yeah, please.
Well, this is, so this is an active well. That's somewhat inaccurate. 25, 25A, 26, and 26A have been inactive over time, but those four wells serve the IDE area out west of the system. So those four probably have the least, what they, they, as you can see, they have the least chromium six in those wells, but they also have the least activity connect. They don't have the connection to our main system. So we don't have any real way to share water like we do in the main system. So, and I just want to point that out that, and he brings up a great point. 28 is on this and it's below 20, 30 is not on that list, but we are going to be taking samples in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. That is, that's what I, from a regulatory update, I, I chose not to go back to all the details about the assessment of water supplies, production, water quality, site constraints, and opportunities for achieving compliance going forward. That's our activities that we're working on with your staff right now. It's going well. We intend to have a next work, uh, session scheduled here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and keep making progress to address this and to keep the communication going amongst you and others in the community. Your customers, but also others in the water utility community in the Coachella Valley area in particular, um, as they are also working to achieve compliance on the, the soon to be finalized schedule. So hopefully that answered your, your, answered the call there. I'm glad to answer any questions that you've got.
I have a question. Yes, I have a question. Uh, I think we all recognize the, the, the health hazards that chromium six, uh, presents. Uh, however, 10 parts per billion seems like a very, um, arbitrary number. What were, what were the, the reasoning behind selecting that number? Cause it's significantly more strict than the federal guidelines. Am I correct?
That, that is true. So again, this represents, uh, the first hexavalent chromium specific MCL. Whereas the US EPA federal MCL is for total chromium, uh, at 100. California Division of Drinking Water and their developing of this, we're kind of reissued MCL. Analyzed MCL alternatives as low as two micrograms per liter up to, um, you know, 20 and 50 micrograms per liter. The, the directive they have is to set the MCL as close to the public health goal, which note is 20, parts per trillion. So dramatically lower. So they have to set it as close to the public health goal as economically and technically feasible. So they went through an analysis of technical feasibility based upon what methods are available to measure hexavalent chromium and it can be reliably detected down to point one micrograms per liter as is established as the new detection limit. And they then, uh, looked at treatability and that's where they, they got down to two micrograms per liter and then they did economic analysis. And they came to the conclusion that 10 micrograms per liter was the lowest MCL that could be established that they deemed to be economically feasible. Now, interestingly, they don't say that 10 is more or less economically feasible than in any higher values, but they do explicitly state in the initial statement of reasons, which is the regulatory document, that nine micrograms per liter was deemed to be economically infeasible. I suspect there will be lots of conversations about how those were defined and how they came to those outcomes in the months and year to come.
Okay, uh, thank you, Aaron Brockovich.
Chad, uh, just a quick question. Would you be able to share your presentation, um, with us just so the board members could have that?
Absolutely. Yeah, already have. Uh, I think it's in staff's hands. So glad to have you all use it and there's, uh, there's lots more, uh, more coming behind that with more, uh, district specific analysis with the work that we'll be developing with your team.
Okay, thank you. And then just a reminder to board members being a workshop, feel free to ask questions.
So it's, uh, my recollection is that when this was originally passed and rescinded, it was because the lawsuit was based on the fact that there was no funding, if I remember correctly. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
Question the calculation of cost, the, the cost of the.
So is there any state funding for remediation?
As far, there is funding available for groundwater treatment. The issue that we may run into is that PFOS is now what seems to be getting a lot of the attention in Sacramento and in Washington DC. So, and actually Chrome six isn't even a federal issue. So the only pot that we can look at is going to be state. So we believe that there is going to be funding for disadvantaged communities as it relates to Chrome six, because most of the areas that are impacted by groundwater along a fault line are disadvantaged communities. I believe, and Chad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as impact, you have Golden State Water because they have so many small systems up and down the state, and then it's CBWD and probably IWA number two is the ones that are most impacted and maybe SoCal Creek. Maybe not in that order, but it's probably close.
Yeah, certainly the Coachella Valley systems, uh, in your neighborhood there, Coachella Valley Water District, um, in both the Cove system and their ID eight system, Indio. Uh, others, you know, Joshua Basin, 29 Palms, all around you all there have, have wells that are implicated. Other water systems, California Water Service, California American Water, uh, have several districts that have impacted, uh, wells. And then the rest of them are kind of concentrated in the, the Monterey Bay area, Soco Creek, Watsonville, um, many others, very, very small water systems, but there are impacted systems across the state. The vast majority of them are small, serving well, well less than a thousand service connections. And the real test for the state in achieving, you know, having water systems achieve compliance will be how they can assist those small systems in assessing and then implementing treatment as necessary and funding it. So I think, uh, Brian, your point about funding, uh, having other priorities for other contaminants like PFAS is certainly true. In addition, within the context of just hexavalent chromium, we know that the California safer program and the dollars that are being directed towards small and disadvantaged communities, there's a ranking system for different water quality contaminants and how those are slated for funding priority. Hexavalent chromium isn't in that rubric yet and it won't be until after the MCL is finalized. So I don't expect that it will be accounted for until 2025's plan at the earliest. And I think the implementation schedule, I showed you that table where systems serving greater than 10,000 connections get two years to comply, thousand to 10,000 get three years, less than a thousand get four years. I tend to think the state is going to need all of those four years to figure out how they can support those smaller systems because, you know, out of the about, uh, I want to say there's about 400, 500 water systems that are impacted by this MCL. Well, more than half of them serve fewer than a thousand connections. And they, we don't have a good history of how to best address hexavalent chromium in those small systems yet.
Can you put the, the screen back up that had the communication they were requiring?
Yes, yeah, just.
Question about that.
Indeed. Um, let me push the share on Zoom.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, no problem at all.
To your question, Robert, uh, what are competitions going to be and is there any funding available? It may be, but we're screwed. We are going to probably have to self-fund any treatment enhancements that are well, yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Disgusting, but in the, in the language that we're going to be forced to, to provide them, the, the tier two public notice is going to be the one that approximately may in 2025, right?
That's our expectation. Um, it, this, this comes down to how you operate wells. So if the wells that have the highest concentrations can not be operated and other wells with lower concentrations can be operated on an interim basis, this could be pushed out a little bit further perhaps. But at some point, if those and what those wells are operated without treatment, we'd expect that they would trigger it after three, uh, quarters worth of monitoring.
Okay. Thank you.
So really it would be more, if I go to the timeline, it would be, hang on. We think it would be end of 25, Q4 of 25 or Q1 of 26, when that communication would be expected.
Okay, okay. So that gives us even a little bit more time to kind of strategize and I, and given that this has been an issue that has been on the books and off the books for a while, I know that we've all been discussing it since I've been here for the last year. Can you kind of share with us what your initial plan is? What, what, what's the start of your plan?
Well, obviously hiring an expert like Chad to help us through that was the first step. And you're right, we have been looking at this for years. Um, keep it, if you could, Chad, leave this slide up because I think it's important for what a point you and I talked about yesterday. And one of the things that happened when this first happened years ago is that folks that were compliant, then when they looked at the CCR, they saw things over 10 parts per billion. And they said, well, you were out of compliance. No, because of that rounding situation that goes on and you're looking at the quarterly testing. From that perspective, it confused folks. So we're looking at a two-pronged approach, if you will, one being compliant, but also making sure that when we issue our 2026 CC Consumer Confidence Report, that we don't have anything on there that's 10. So that's a little bit more aggressive than what the state's doing, but that's who I will try and achieve.
No, I want it to be aggressive.
And so when, when Chad was bringing up 28 and then saying 30 is not on here, the significance of those two wells is those wells were taken out of service for a variety of different reasons and a lot of, they're right along Mission Creek or Mission Lake Boulevard. At that location, those MCLs are very low. They're well close to the Mission Creek and the belief is that they're flushing things out.
Yeah.
At one time there was uranium that showed up in those wells and we had treatment at one of those two, but not at the other. Since then, when we've been trending uranium, it's always stayed below that MCL and it's still way low than home six. We are testing those two wells right now to see if we can bring them back online. Those wells were drilled in 1994, so they have significant useful life left in them. So we're looking to assess those. The other unique situation is well 34, which is right next to the Skyborne property is also there. That has been offline because of just some pump issues and then we were doing some rehab to the actual casing. That's going to be coming back online before, I think before the end of summer this year. Also because Skyborne has been very successful in selling lots through Lennar, they have actually given us money to now develop well 35 in that area. So we're talking about bringing on three wells potentially in that area to offset the two or three wells that he showed that were above the MCL. So, and just in that short, we have a plan moving forward. The question is, can we get all of this done so we can be in line to do that? And we also have wells that are still under construction that we believe are going to be. Did we get the testing for 42? Is it, it's, it's below 10 as well, correct?
It's below 10. Initially, we haven't received the second round.
Okay. So well 42 is the well that we're at currently under construction. We just had a amendment so we can move forward with that development of that well. It's been under construction for about a year and a half, almost two years at this point, but it has shown that it's under 10. So if things play out the way we hope, we're going to have two, if not three wells, maybe four, maybe even five wells brought onto the system that are lower than the MCL and they will, three or four of them will be available to us by the end of this calendar year and then we can, we'll be selective. Now, we don't like to take stranded assets and leave them there and not have an answer for those as well. So Chad is going to help us prioritize how we fix the other wells. But we believe that we have a process in place that will keep us not only in compliance, but to make sure we don't confuse our customers by putting a more than 10 on there. Now, if we have a spike or something happens in the groundwater, a test, it's odd. You saw one anomaly there where it dropped really low and then went back up. Those we, we have to deal with, but we're going to try to minimize that risk if you can by what we're doing.
And can we make sure that our staff and Chad is also coordinating next year or even this year with potential DWA replenishments to make sure that if that flushing that occurs in any of those wells, we're not testing at exactly that moment. I think it would be important to coordinate.
You have to get deliveries for that.
If we were to get a delivery, I agree, but if we were to get deliveries, I want to make sure we coordinate the, the, the water quality flush that occurs when they do give it after a long period of time. We're, we're, we're not going to test that water right away. We're going to make sure we coordinate.
The regulatory testing is requirement every quarterly. So we'll work through that, but we have seen historically, and I think that was talked about in our last meeting, that yes, the monitoring well next to the replenishment ponds does see an instant jump.
Yeah.
The rest of the wells in our system, because 28 was the one that they referenced the most and that's the closest, wasn't as impact. It takes a while to get there.
Okay.
So while we talk about a flush and we think of something almost like a commode, really moving a lot of water, it's underground. It takes time to migrate from north to south. So from that perspective, it's going to take some time. So we may not see a, an immediate impact with a delivery, but it may be a prolonged effect.
But is it not possible that consistent deliveries would assist in that in keeping dilution and things moving?
That is what the belief is. It has not been substantiated or proven, but that's what the.
But if we had them, we could prove it, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need though.
Thank you.
I know we have somebody for public comment.
Yeah, I just, uh.
I'm done with my question.
Did you have any questions then?
No, no. Okay. Um, just a couple more that I had was, I like the idea of trying to avoid going out and making these statements and keeping them under 10. Um, how does the testing work? Cause I know we've talked a lot about blending. Is the testing at the wellhead? And if that's over, we have to go out with that statement or is it testing? Are we able to do the blending to avoid triggering that?
Chad, this is, this is perfect for you.
Yeah, glad to answer that. So the point of compliance is what's defined as the entry point to the, to the distribution system. So if a given groundwater well has chromium above 10, but another well has below 10 and those can be combined before putting that water into the distribution system, the compliance sample will be collected after the point of blending. And that's a very specific part of our evaluation that we're working through with your staff now to discern how any infrastructure changes, piping water from a low concentration to a high concentration well or vice versa, or to some other central point provide that opportunity to achieve compliance without treatment.
But just to clarify, we don't have that ability now. The blending, if we were to do blending would be at the reservoir. So it all, it'd be in the system.
Correct.
Would we need to have a separate reservoir, I guess, right next to the what? How to avoid, cause what doesn't it, right? When it comes out of our wells, it's in our system.
At most well sites, yes.
Yeah, we, we would, we would, yes, we would have, there are some that have smaller reservoirs that we could then open up the clay valve and let it backfeed into the system, but that would require some piping and we do not have that ability now. Now, would we have it between now and the end of the year? I don't think so. I think we're on schedule to get other wells and hopefully have the capacity. So we look at the blending in the following calendar year, but that's working with Chad and his folks as well as Danny, I apologize, Danny, you probably should have been up here for this discussion. Um, but but yes, Danny and Chad are also working at it and also distribution too, because some of the things that we're trying to maybe accomplish in blending would impact our distribution and transmission system. So that would work with, uh, Jeff Nutter as well. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a complete effort, if you will, to make sure that we stay compliant, but I think we've got a good team and with Chad's help, I think. But I think we've got a good team and with Chad's help, I think we can have a good plan.
And then last question I have is just, um, the wells that are over ten. Is there some possibility? I know, I don't know the right terms, but we've talked about. You know, sections of that well could be blocked off if the chromium six is at a certain level.
I think this is a perfect question for Danny. Because we are looking at that and most of the things I've said has been parroted but by conversations I've had with Danny and Chad. So I want to make sure that he has the opportunity to share his expertise.
Good morning. Thank you, General Manager Macy. Yes, we could do spinner tests. We have done that on some newer wells to understand, because the heart of our wells are in this Mission Creek zone. Uh, the lower part is low in uranium and the upper part where we receive waters is high in uranium. But it's almost less than one or one point nine respectively in chrome six. But uh, as we drill in this area, we can do spare tests for new wells. We can actually go down in and do that and do some zone sampling. A little more difficult at post, but it can be done. We can go through and blank off areas. Where we feel that maybe certain water quality uh, can be eliminated to, so we can eliminate other possibilities. But to to I guess drill down on some of your questions, this process will be either treatment as the best, what type of treatment? It could be blending, as you all know, uh, it could be, uh, just to kind of hit on what General Manager Macy said. Let's go back to the first time it was implemented. We should, we were able to shut off certain wells and and prolong some of that. Some of those wells have had issues as Brian was alluding to, so there might be a more beneficial to. Put those walls back in service and then keep some of the other wells offline. While we have, we can develop whether they're close proximity to say sewer and and a certain process might be better to to use there. Or we can combine them and have property where we can put a reservoir before it goes into the system for consumptive use. Cause it can go in the system, it just can't, has to go before consumptive use. And so there's there's different ways we can do it, but yes, we're looking at every one of those options to see what's the best thing for the district.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Danny, the wells that are an issue, are they also requiring other? Are they on the list for other improvements as well? Are any of those chromium wells on?
Yes, some of them that have, uh, the one that has the highest chromium level is not.
Okay.
But some of them do. Some of the improvements are improvements that would, uh. I guess, address the issue of of how we could incorporate it. Some of them are electrical, some are just slight improvements, but. It it would probably, it could if we could prolong it and wait to go ahead and do those improvements at the same time and how to do that.
Yeah.
We're looking at those those options. So we we are definitely, we're going to go into the hot month, so we're going to tax the system again. And that's what we prepare for every year to see how we can, uh, uh, produce the water for our demand and and run through these issues. We're going to look at all that. So Chad is, as as we mentioned, the expert to help us through that process. Uh, and then there's another hydrogeologist that's, I'll be bringing that contract incidentally to the board for amendment. But then we have another contract that is for well rehabilitation prioritization. So combining those offers with Chad's efforts and his team will bring something back to.
Good work.
Thank you. I miss him, thank you.
No, perfect, thank you.
All right, and um, I'll open public comment. Director McKenna, you wanted to speak. I don't know if it's best for you to come here to be close to the microphone or if the podium mic.
At your pleasure.
Um, I'd say this.
Yeah, yeah.
Do a little less complicated.
Absolutely.
Um, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, I'm Gerald McKenna, resident of Desert Hot Springs. Uh, the opinions I express here today will be my own, not those of the Desert Water Agency or its board of directors. Having said that, I could say what I want. Um, going into this process, it's obviously going to be challenging. It's not very expensive. It's going to be technically very difficult. Um, I would like to see openness. I would like to see the community involved. I want to see transparency, what's going on. At the end of the day, didn't they double or triple the water bills, my water bill included? Um, and I think you'll, it would be better for everyone if you release results you've already got. You know, I I have information which is not accessible to the public and I've done analysis that most people can't do. And I find that the chromium six level where I live in my house is in the range of twenty five to thirty. Well, it's way above what these.
That's impossible, by the way. It's not coming from our system, I can tell you that.
Well, let's 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 see. Come over to my house to take.
We we test, we test everything, go well.
Come over and test it. I'm telling you to do that.
Yeah.
Um, I hear, I hear a consultant here who's really trying to game the system, you know, let's not do testing for the first of April twenty twenty five. Let's, let's, if we get greater than forty, then we've got a problem. The greater than ten is a problem. Ten point one is the average you delivered to customers in the last, in the year twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one, ten point one. Average of the whole system. So you've obviously got wells that are not complying. And you obviously got customers like me, you're getting chromium six levels at their home, well above ten. And you know this. So let's get in this together. Let's try and adopt solutions. I heard what you said about Colorado River Water. I'm going to work on that. I'm looking at it intensively, going back to two thousand and four. Um, Colorado River Water is a part of the solution. When that water goes into the aquifer, because of its pH level, it helps. Prevent chromium six leaching into the the groundwater. So there's there's part of the solution. Part of the solution is work with the other agencies in the valley, you know, Coachella Valley has two big wells. North of Dillon and around Atlantic Avenue, pumping water out that has a very high chromium six level. They have to deal with it. They will develop. Methods and means and will understand a little better how to deal with it. You should share that information. You should share in.
Oddly enough, Chad Sidell is under contract with them as well, as well as IWA and the city of Coachella. So we've got an expert that is going to have a regional approach as well as a local approach.
Absolutely. That's what I'm encouraging here today is to get involved, get the other agencies involved. You know, we may be part of the solution. Met may be part of the solution, that that massive aquifer that comes right past you is a part of the solution, you know? Do you need a tie-in to that? Guess what? We've got one. Do you need a reservoir? We've got land to build it on. You know, there are solutions. That we can help with, and I want to help you deal with this problem because I'm living with it too, you know? And three of the directors on our board are drinking your water. So that's a significant number when you have a board of directors of five. Think about it. We can definitely help. Let's have it out in the public. Let's let's involve the community. Let's not hit them with, you know. First of April twenty twenty five, oh, guess what? We we have a problem. Tell them now we have a problem and and engage them in the solution. That's what I'm asking. That's my piece. I know you kind of gave questions to the public, but.
Thank you.
Coming from a citizen in Desert Hot Springs, he's well informed.
Any other discussion on item five before we move on? Item six, fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget.
Thanks, Chad.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you all. Look forward to working with you all.
Item A of item six, administration, building repairs. General manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. Uh, Danny Friend will be giving this discussion. As you know, this was asked to be brought to this workshop to. Uh, basically, talk about the the history, if you will, of the repairs, both at this building as well as a potential fence. Uh, between the two buildings and Danny's, uh, put together a presentation.
Dan? Thank you. Good morning, Dan. Thank you. Uh, so just a little history. I was working on the other side. I'm going to read off the slide. So we we did in October two thousand eighteen, February twenty nineteen, experienced a lot of flood damage. Uh, we had a lot of roof repairs. It's obvious as we walk through the building, there's a lot of viscoing. Uh, there's areas that looks that incomplete. Um, the original roof repair made in twenty nineteen fixed the leaks, took care of it. Uh, the most recent bids received to take care of, uh, the interior work. Uh, we we brought to the board, uh, I believe we brought to the board to reject the bids, as you can see in the upper side. Those costs at that time, or with the apparent lowest bidder, just under seventy five thousand dollars, seventy four thousand nine hundred ninety five. Uh, bringing that to today's cost is an approximate eighty five thousand to ninety five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So what we're here to talk about is, does the district, uh, do we want to move forward with any of the repairs? Uh, that of this building. One of the things that I'll share is when we were talking about. Remodeling this building and incorporating the annex as our initial phase. Uh, then build a new building on this campus. It was this history, but when that all initiated, we had this property, uh, uh. Uh, what do you call it? Uh, as that's as far as what could we get from it? From it, and even at that time, they said that they don't even recommend making the repairs to the building. Because most people that would either buy it or rent it or however it would be configured is going to do some sort of tenant improvement. Use it for something different than what it's suited our purpose. So those are some of the reasons why we we brought this. Several different, um, times to the board, either self-perform it, uh, then go out and bid it. We rejected those bids. Uh, we've also coupled with this to see if we can save costs and potentially do it in-house. Uh, we've got a bunch of skilled, uh, workers in in our in our field service area or in our just our construction and maintenance area. They they are not experts. They could get the job done. They've given us estimates anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty hours just to go ahead and complete the work. Uh, doesn't include material. It would likely be done, the majority would be done on on time and a half overtime. Simply because we have other jobs to do, other things would be disruptive to offices here. They could do some of the less disruptive areas like. The conference room, but if we were going to do anything, I think that the the staff would go back to possibly. Uh, having it done from an outside contractor, but then again, does, do we want to spend anywhere above ninety five thousand dollars? And I'm open to any questions or General Manager Macy.
No, I think we could stop the presentation here because there are two parts to this. One is the, unless the board would like to go on with the fence discussion, would we like to?
Discuss this.
Okay.
Um, I guess my question would be just to. How much work would go into going out to bid again and could the bid be split? I know, uh, Director Meyer Hoppin did make a good point of the walls that are exposed to the exterior walls. If there's a couple walls where, you know, to compare the whole project versus just insulating and drywalling. The walls that are exposed to the exterior wall, just to save on possible insulator, energy costs.
Okay, so, um, I think the best way for me to answer that is. I believe there's one small area, but for the most majority of all these repairs, you see the viscoing. And then you see the the first stripping, as I referred to it, that's holding up. We are insulated, so the R value that we may receive from just the the Jimson board, the drywall. I don't know if it's significant to go out and spend ninety five thousand dollars and 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 so if you go back to your first question. I I would, it would be minimal cost, but I don't know if those numbers are going to be, they're probably going to match our projections or be much higher based on the fact that. Everything that we've done in the last three years has been surprising as far as the big reasons. Um, that work is subject to prevailing waves. There's a lot of people, a lot of comments made. I could have somebody come and do it. My husband can do this. I get that. It's, there's, that's the world that we that we live in and we work in and we have to comply with. So, um, maybe ten hours if if we just refreshed everything and put it back out there. Uh, to take and address maybe the concern that there is no insulation. I don't have it exactly to look at, but I believe it's either one or two areas that do not have insulation. But, uh, it's, it had, there is insulation. We may need to refresh that. We could perhaps, I could say, I can say this, to take off that first stripping and address those areas and material. We would definitely be less than a thousand dollars, so.
I definitely would lean towards that route than trying to completely do the entire project.
I agree with you. Can I ask a question? Are any of these any type of health and safety issue for employees? Are our employees complaining about any health or safety issues? Have we had any complaints about any health and safety issues?
So the first question is, is it a safety, so every.
Have they been recognized as being?
So we're obligated to test any time that things have gotten wet, damp. Uh, we always look for. Uh, we've had several environmental companies come in and do surface testing, environmental testing. Uh, everything has resulted in no concern, no harm to health.
Thank you.
Uh, this, you're welcome. And the second part, I'll just add, there has been a comment made at one time, and I can't remember how long ago, but. Is it, is it, you know, I'm I'm coughing, is it, is it, is it maybe possibly that? And, yeah, and and we actually had it tested again and again, resulting in no concern. That's the last thing that that the, at the team here, the management or just as as MSW do. We don't want to put it on our staff. I don't want to work on it, but so.
I just kind of wanted to put that out there. You know, I think for for me. Spending money on putting Band-Aids on something that's temporary would only matter if there were health and safety issues. So cosmetically, uh, yeah, is it a pretty, you know, present with a bow on it that we all want to be proud of, not yet? Um, but I think our new plans will be, and I think our our staff has been very kind to want to prioritize that way in the past.
They have been understanding, they have been patient, but they also have been with the understanding that we were moving, uh, pretty steadfast on on a new facility. And and given the circumstances, they're they're understanding of that as well, but, uh, other than being unsightly. Uh, the, uh, we're not going to gain that much in energy loss from adding, uh, any type of drywall. And there are no health concerns.
Thank you.
So what what were they testing for?
Uh, mainly for, uh, any that will basically mold or various types of mold and anything that would happen. When gypsum board or when insulation would get wet, so.
We also went through an evaluation of our entire airflow system during COVID as well. So we've changed out all the filters and we've updated some of the air conditioners and fans and stuff like that, so.
And to provide context, we had a major flood. We had the roof repair. We did various testing. Then after the, after the, uh, repairs were made, we had some spot, uh, issues and then again, we did some additional testing. So as we stand today, I hate to say it, but, um, there have been no leaks today. So I just changed it, so.
So get your buckets out. Thank you, Danny.
Director Sewell, I agree with you. That's all I'm looking for, is just to get a thousand dollars to patch up the biggest block, make it look presentable.
Okay, um, and.
There's no reason to spend any more money than that at this time. Just make it look reasonable. That's what I'm asking.
I guess if it's the consensus of the board to do that, staff would just handle those.
If it's, is it presentable or do the?
Yeah, I think we have to clarify.
Yeah, presentable or getting insulation in the areas that don't. Because presentable is going to be fifty, sixty thousand dollars, maybe even the eighty five mark. Versus if we're just trying to fill in the insulation, that's the thousand dollar.
I think it was just insulation on exterior walls.
Let me rephrase that, yes, just presentable where the needs the installation and the new drywall.
We're not going to, we just told, I think the consensus was no drywall, though.
Yeah, we were just saying, fix the insulation, leave everything as is. Were you saying you want to do drywall as well?
Get five pieces of drywall and screw it up, so screw it on there, so, I mean, you're not going to see any difference. You're still going to have.
Are you talking about just the conference?
Just the conference room and General Manager Macy's office. That's all I've been talking about.
But I think that's what they were just explaining would require a bunch of specific labor because of the rules we have to abide by. And that's going to be the ninety thousand.
Like you and I can just screw the drywall, because I could, I could do that, but we're not allowed. So. No, no, it's a public agency and so you have to.
I lean toward.
We could come in here after two, three o'clock in the morning.
No, really, yeah, yeah, come on, guys.
I wish that we had the freedom to do those kind of things, but we have to abide by the rules, unfortunately.
Really, as, never mind. You know what?
Um, can we get consensus of insulation or insulation and drywall?
Insulation.
Insulation.
And do with insulation.
And that's something that we don't need to act on formally, that could be under.
I believe we can do that under building repairs and maintenance. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, the fence?
Thank you. So we were, uh, staff was asked to to look at installing a fence between the two buildings. Uh, the shot I took, I know it's not the best picture, but, uh, on the right is the annex building, on the left is the, uh. Excuse me, the administration building. So there is a, uh, a split rail fencing there in in the middle. Uh, delineating the the demonstration ground. So staff did go out, get, uh, two proposals, uh, starting at the. Um, fencing is roughly ninety one hundred feet, six feet tall, includes a walk gate near the the admin building. Uh, and the quotes range between eleven thousand. Uh and the quotes range between eleven thousand and eleven eleven thousand twenty two thousand. Um this view looking west, uh the fence would come off the corner of the annex building. You can see that at at the far end of the picture. Run approximately nine feet to the north to our property line or the right away line is paralleling um Second Street. And then it would run east uh easterly along the property line and then go to the next slide. To that wall which is actually just outside my current office. So the then would connect with a walk gate, so. Um some questions were, what do we need a gate or not? But that is a fire exit, so to put everybody in corral them into that area on on a fire escape plan wouldn't be wise. So we'd have to have an opportunity to be able to get back, not only just fire, but just use it under our normal. We we should be doing more testing, but when we do like say evacuation routes and those types of surprises. We just have to have a face for somebody to go, so uh what I'll point out and this is the the difference in elevation. To to basically go straight line and not go forward and parallel, uh it was a lot more costly. So to to be able to go out and address that, but uh we can go to the previous slide, please. Address the uh you can see the patio or or the entryway to the annex. To address that portion and then go straight north, instead of going straight across, they would have to come up with steps. Um I did, there is a big range, eleven thousand to twenty two thousand. They were both within feet of each other, so if they were exact the same, exact same number of feet, I don't think there would be much more than maybe a thousand dollars difference. Uh one was proposing on three inch by three inch uh posts, which is it's it's pretty extreme. Uh the other would be, everything else was consistent with what we already have. If you look at. It would match, so three quarter inch pickets, six foot tall, uh painted black, galvanized dip, painted black, um. Heavy duty, two by two posts, so even if. Uh I think in all fairness, we would we would approach the other two, go ahead and and submit with two by two posts. And then we would look to be the lowest, but we can see at this point in time, eleven thousand would likely be the lowest cost if we were to go ahead and reform that. And I mean, the last slide is discussions.
And um by putting that fence, it would secure the entire campus. That's the only kind of.
Though that would add a a uh an additional layer of security, so the 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 campus is secured at the very bottom. So at this level here, if you were to walk out the door, you'll see security, uh you'll see that it's intact. It goes against the uh um the accounting module. And um I'm sorry. No, go ahead. No, I so and then of course we have it on the on on the um east side as well.
And I guess what was the overall goal of the fence?
Um can I defer that to General Manager Mason?
I think that was it was just a request by Director Meyer Hoffman when we look at this. Um but let me add, this is probably the best picture. This is never intended to walk down off of this street and proceed south. It is always intended, the handicap ramps and everything and the access all comes off of this parking lot here. So that's why you're talking about the grade and things like that. It was never intended to come from Second Street.
Yeah, I can add to that if if there's a need for it. I can go back to some background, but do we have another question?
Just one, have we had any thefts or or vandalism in that area in the last five years?
I I in the particular area that we're talking about?
That we would be fencing on.
Um nothing significant, uh so. I won't go into deep history, uh I'll let you ask questions if you want more information. This used to be an open campus. And everybody accessed from the back end. That's where our ADA parking is today, as as General Manager Macy mentioned. That's where the 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 ramp path is, that's where an open campus, we had a full grassed area with with benches and. Answering to the to the need of conservation that's been removed, but. Security, our first step of security here was after an attempted theft of a vehicle, an employee's vehicle, so we 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 did the. The parking lot only, but it was still semi-open and then the next phase of implementation was for for employee security. Uh especially going out at night, uh even before time, the time, you know, with the daylight savings, at five thirty it's dark, so. Uh we were met with different people sleeping uh on the ramp below, sleeping under the canopy, uh surprises, so we'd add that second layer. The annex building we acquired in January of twenty twelve. And we didn't own that building, uh for we haven't owned that building since the early, early eighties, almost seventies. Um the point being is, yes, people, it's got a, it's a race floor, it's a subfloor, we've had a lot of people. Stole all the plumbing from the bathrooms underneath.
Okay.
Um so yeah, so the so the added security would just uh it would be an added layer of security and it would only secure the demonstration garden. Everything else at this point in time is already fully uh secured. The um we added a section of pathway. On one of the meandering paths, thank you, and this is the Google Earth uh image. Uh I know that because I was gonna use it for its resolution, but it actually showed all the grass before we moved it. And um if I I'm like actually get up if I may, for those that look at this screen, members of the public. Uh we added a section right here uh so that we can uh we can actually go through here. But that actually puts you outside. That was our first. Now we've put that area over here on the south by the annex and that's how we get back and forth. So initially it was thought that, yeah, we'll just go ahead and extend the pathway. And we'll go to that entry location, but it causes our employees to go out. They do that during the during the middle of the day, but. During the uh nighttime hours, they can actually access it from a secure parking lot.
Director Meyer, do you want to share your concerns?
Thought I already did, but it got passed up or something. My concerns are the safety issues out there with the irrigation. I noticed that this morning, one of the pipes had been fixed. My concern i- is that. I I asked. General Manager Macy to answer your question. About six months ago. Yes, there was vandalism. There was a piece of cactus laying out there.
It was not confirmed whether it was vandalism or if it was broken off by the wind. Or by our landscapers, it wasn't aware of what they were doing. So we can't confirm that. There was no police report filed or anything like that, so that's why their. Director Meyer Hoffman is right. There was a lot of branches that were broken off one of those practices, but we don't know why or how.
And and just for clarification, I I did know about the, I I said significant, I I didn't mean the withhold.
All right, so to answer your question, yes, there was vandalism there. It came in maybe with a big machete or knife and cut the cactus off. I know this because I've been around verticals for too long to not understand. That it wasn't cut off. You go out there and when you leave this morning, there's a piece of cactus laying there now and you can see it been cut. So either that was from six months ago or the landscapers aren't cleaning things up. So at that time I asked that on the bill on the. Building up here that they put put a uh camera up there to look down in there. Never happened. I asked camera out here and give us more coverage too in the parking lot for our vehicles and people coming in and out. That's not it. So we have some real safety issues here. There's no reason and and for me to have to do what I had to do. To get it to this point is just to me is just unacceptable. It really is. So now what we're looking at here is. Not repairing the steps or putting in a a ramp. You're being told that that's an exit for people so they don't get trapped in the fire, but there is a gate that goes out that they. Go out and already come out the back, so. I don't know who these contractors are, just like I said.
No, I I I do, but I'm I'm.
Go ahead.
No, you you know, you were saying, I'm sorry, I was actually.
You had you had a couple of contractors come to give you an estimate on the front fence.
That's correct.
I don't know that. I don't know why we don't get this information of who these contractors are, when they're coming, what the bids are and why, but.
Well, it I I didn't know that that was the level of operations that the board members want to get into. I'm not bringing the item to the board for action.
That's right.
I'm actually bringing uh what my findings are of of a request by a board member, so if.
I'm not saying that you've done something wrong.
No, but I can clarify, uh Precision is one of the companies that we worked with that provided the uh bid for the three by three heavy duty posts. Uh just south of twenty two thousand dollars. And and then Patton Enterprises is a company that also had been the one that had been awarded several repairs of our wrought iron fence. And he was he was the company or that was a company in eleven K, so if if if. If I were to bring this forward for action, I can provide all that in my staff report. And and before we get too further down, since I have an opportunity to talk, I just want to address the issue about the the common button, the cameras. Uh the district does have cameras for the parking lot and it is on the annex building and it. Um it works quite well because I have Mr. Jeff Nutter said, hey man, you're early today because I saw the cameras triggered. Normally we don't have that, but. That that whole parking lot area.
Down the side of the fence here or not?
Correct, and then just outside my offices, I wish we could show the view here, but it's just looking at what's on the screen. Um yes, thank you, so we're.
That covers the garden now?
We do, yeah, we do, and and uh to say it covers it entirely, that's its intention, it covers. The north of the door, south of the door, again, it was it was intended for the safety and security of our staff. And it does pan and capture, it doesn't pan, but it captures a side pan view of the of the actual um. Uh garden. We have the same thing on the front of the building and the same thing on the east side of the building on the staircase, if those are exterior doors. And and they run a live stream of those cameras for the front office, just to make sure that we do get deliveries, we do have those things. So and I just, I'll stop there because that's at the point of the conversation. I just wanted to make the point correction.
They never bring that up, Mr. Friend. The reason why I find that so amazing because when I came in. You could tell they left cactus behind, so it was either the night before or maybe the day before, but it was just. And nobody said anything about cameras to check, to see who came in, to analyze it, to file that these report, so. And I I it's news to me, I'm flabbergasted that. There was vandalism there, nobody looked at the cameras to see who did it. What do you guys want to, you it's been like this for ten years, there's a stump out there. Where somebody could trip over and instead of the district, ten years ago, and I know it's been that long because. I've been around that long anyhow, you put rocks on top of the on the stump so people won't trip over the stump.
Or is that?
Right in front of the axis going down along the annex building.
So there's all these safety issues is what I'm concerned with. The safety issue, now I know there's cameras, so we're not using it.
Is that where the bench old benches to be?
Man, it's right, right up.
Yeah, it it's basically under, it's the tree that you see there at the northeast corner, the top.
The northeast?
Of the, yeah, it no, the northeast corner of the building.
Easier?
No, it's the other, it's. Well, yeah, it's right, it's right, right behind the truck, right behind Steve's truck.
There's a stump in there?
Yeah.
Uh I I did not, but but uh I just, is it outside the split rail or is it inside?
Outside, it's north of it.
It's in it's in the even.
In the right way.
Well, on the other side of the sidewalk is one of them, yeah.
No, I didn't notice it, so there's something that I don't.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
So I would just say, my um opinion or preference, I think the fence might be a little. Over our budget, I'd rather see that money be spent elsewhere. Um I'm happy that our employees are safe, our campus is secure. If we were to put any money towards this, I'd rather take care of the stump or the minor details and not spend. Over eleven thousand dollars on a fence, but I'm up for what.
The board never talked about the fence. We never talked about what kind of fence. We've never done any, you know, wood, wrought iron.
It would match the parking lot, direct uh.
Yeah.
Would a wrought iron match the parking lot?
So the perimeter fencing of the parking lot currently exists as wrought iron, it's black. It's a three quarter inch picket, four inch on the side.
Did you say it was galvanized dip black?
It is galvanized dip black, so it's galvanized dipped then then painted, so the galvanized dipping is the longevity for its coating and then it's painted to match what we. So um.
So we're not gonna be able to secure that because of the cost of the fence.
So secure it for the. Of of uh some vandalism or just secure it for our staff or.
It's unclear to me what I was even talking about to begin with. Alls I brought up was the safety issues, the vandalism, now you're telling me. We have cameras out there, but nobody checked for who ca- cut up all the cactus. You got a piece of cactus out there now, so if the wind didn't break it off. You know, uh. If the you wouldn't have any cactus over three feet high in the desert if that's the case. And that's in between two buildings, it's actually protected, so no, it wouldn't have went, I'm sorry. It it, what are we gonna do? What do you guys want to do? Pass board is still here, that's three of you here from before. Are we making headway here? What do you guys want to do? I said, I'm only one vote on this.
I I was just kind of curious, I vaguely remember the conversation about a fence, so I was like. Well, I don't I don't know that there's a drastic need. I think if there's safety issues, we can remediate those. But I eleven thousand dollars could go towards insulation.
I'm I'm okay without doing this, I'm just gonna.
You fix the safety issue.
It appears as though there are no safety issues from what they just reported, right? Did I miss something when I?
That stump that you could trip over, that's a safe hole shielded.
Address the stump, but I'm I'm thinking that the fence line itself was gonna be inside of um on property line. So the tree that was shown it shown here, it would be behind that tree, was south of that tree, so it wouldn't have never addressed it, so I can remove the stump. But I'm trying to make sure I understand if there are any other safety issues. Because it was never intended for anybody to enter that area from the north.
Should we put a sign that says this is not an entrance or that this is not public property, like we put on some other properties to prevent? The the sleepers and the the inhabitants?
We can do that. There is a fence at the very front that says ground water guardian, groundwater guardian. There is a sign there that we can put something below.
Okay, I mean, if if we notify that this isn't just a public space and that you're entering at your own risk, that that helps a bit.
Or maybe something like uh. The garden is available by appointment and a staff member can walk them out there if they're interested.
Yeah, we'd enter from the south, as it has always been. A- again, just to to reiterate. This whole lower floor in twenty eleven, mid twenty eleven was. Major, major flood damage, you know, the fire sprinkler system, elephants and all the wall, elephant footed out. Um we had staff in container offices, uh these board meetings were being held at the Carl May Center. And that building became available. So there's there's there exists two separate parcels today, so they were never intended to go from one side to the next. Um we did, as I mentioned earlier, created an extension on the on the um on the sidewalk. And then just to keep people to walk on on sidewalk, but then when we secure the site, we put a gate there, but we don't use it because you have to come out of that area to do it.
And if we chose to sell these properties in the future, we would be selling them as separate properties, correct?
There's options for everything, but likely.
That I mean, okay, thank you.
I think we've.
And just lastly, if if there's anything other than the stump, I just want to make sure I don't walk away with unclear direction on what's unsafe.
Mister Mister Fung. You guys take safety classes. You you have a company that you deal with that gives you safety information. If you walk out there, there's something you can trip over, that probably is a safety concern. I I don't understand why. The district doesn't know what the safety issue is.
When's the last time you've been OSHA trained?
Me personally, uh elements of it.
You get your refresher every year, every?
I'm not required to have it in my position, but our staff on the on the annual.
Okay.
And uh there's elements that I do take, but where you're headed and where we come, yes, we do receive safety training.
Thank you.
But I just for clarification. I want to address unsafe issues where pass the travel happen. I can't I can't control people to where they're gonna go ahead and meander off of the sidewalks or the walk areas. So that's all I'm.
Can I can I make a suggestion? Maybe Director Meyer Hoffman and you could take a tour over there this afternoon or after the meeting. And then you can express all your concerns and that way you know you've told him directly and specifically what the concerns are and he can write it down.
But if to i- in 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 terms of what you just said. Excuse me.
I know, but have you done it with Danny? That's what I'm saying is go with Danny and just say, point everything out because. Two pairs of eyes is better than one and what you might see, he may not, just because, you know, I pass stuff every day and then one day someone someone. So there's a change, you're like, well, when the hell did that happen? You know, I pass stuff every day and then one day someone, someone, there's a chain, you're like, well, when the hell did that happen? Like, oh, that was six months ago. Cause it's the familiarity.
And Director Martin has a.
Yeah, yeah, I want to emphasize what you said, Dan. There are certain parts of our property that aren't designed for pedestrian travel. And we can't be held responsible for people wander off the sidewalk or wander off in there and trudge through the intricacy and trip and fall. That, that's ridiculous. And and I think. If uh, if the stump isn't in the 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 right of way or the fair for the pedestrian on there. Uh, I think Ted had a good point, just to be on the safe side, put a couple of poles on top of it and you don't, it's problem solved. But in terms of spending a lot of time uh, on on safety issues that in areas that aren't designed for pedestrian trap. Um, I think we could move on from that.
I, they already put the rocks on top of there. That's why they missed it.
Okay.
And and to answer the question about. Oh, never mind, but. We will go out there and look at. If if you have an open space. That is an open space. You're asking people, telling people to come down and look at it. You have their cactus out there in that garden as a demonstration garden, so people can understand in the community what will grow here. So you're enticing people to come in to an area that is not safe. If somebody got hurt, if somebody.
We could just tear the whole thing out if you like and just tear out all of those plants and just tear it out and have dirt and then it would be done.
I hope when the new building is built, we'll tear that out and transplant it over there, yeah.
I think we've.
Sure, just tear it all out. Just tear it out and be done with it.
I think we can agree that we all don't agree on what a safety concern is or isn't. And I would like to leave it up to our general manager. This is.
Thank her.
Is uh.
Yes.
What you see is fit for that area, if it's remove the stump, if it's to put up a sign. I completely trust in you and I don't know if we want to have a board consensus that.
Yeah.
I mean. We're, we're going to talk about a stump for three hours.
And we're talking more about just about the stump there. Anyways, I'll go out there with Mister Friend. I talked to the district before. They were supposed to get a hold of the uh.
But.
The 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 our attorney, our counsel. And ask him what the legal ramifications were out there.
It's not accessible from the sidewalk. That's what I told you was the answer before.
Then what are we going to do about it? Put a new fence up? Fix the steps?
No, it's not, it's not accessible from the sidewalk. It's never intended to be that way. The entrance is from the south, not from the north.
We don't want to create any illegal entrance. That's the problem. They're not supposed to use that anyway.
It looks like an entrance.
The sidewalk that they used to get down there is along his office and along that wall. There are steps and there's a gate at the bottom and there's also a location where the sidewalk continues to that spot. The sidewalk is continuous in that location. However, it's not ADA compliant. That's why the ADA compliance is actually in the parking lot. That's why we have handicap spots in our parking lot. It's all accessible from the south. Just to, we've had that conversation.
Just to confirm legal gave you an opinion that we are in compliance and we're okay. I say we move on to the next one. Um, item C, electric vehicle update. Sorry, I'm sorry, item B, employee request.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
For the record, I specifically chose this thinking you were going to do blue today. I was going to put blue. I'm like, no, Amber's going to wear blue, so I'll put this on.
I grabbed the blue one and I thought, no, I think I wore that last time and I threw it back in the closet. Sorry.
Good morning.
Morning, Mariana.
Um, so today we bring you the request for board consideration. I'm just going to go through a little bit of history and the process just to refresh. Um, your memory of how we have done this in the past. And I mentioned something. Mentioned spring employees um, are not represented by a union and this is a really good thing that we have been able to maintain this long. This allows for a more collaborative process with the employees where we can actually hear them directly rather than through a representative. Um, and as part of the budget process, um, staff reviews and assesses all of the costs and increases, including labor costs, wages and benefits. Um, this process. Um, has various components. We met with the employees back on Mar- March seventh. Um, and we listened to their requests. Between March twenty sixth and April eighteen, um, we evaluated those requests. We went through various um, other agencies to see what they were doing as far as some of those requests and I'll get into it a little bit later. And here we are today, presented to the board at this workshop. Next slide, please. So at the employee request meeting on March seven, um. Some of the requests were the same as previous years. Medical insurance cover at a hundred percent at age fifty five. A graduated scale or even include a spouse after um, retirement. Just for um, perspective, right now we offer a hundred percent medical insurance coverage at age sixty. And then at age fifty five is at fifty percent. So the employee pays fifty, the district pays fifty. Um, they are also asking for certification pay for any industry related certifications. Uh, for ten work weeks, sick leave, time donation program, fatigue pay, increasing compensatory time banking hours. Bonus pay for employees that are maxed out. Um, and then other requests, an additional one percent match to defer compensation plan. Pet insurance, an increase in boot allowance and a change to the educational reimbursement policy. Um, just to put this in perspective, because it does seem like a lot. We don't have the employees' votes on the request, so every employee that has a request. We write it down, we listen to it, we evaluate it. So this could be a request from fourteen different employees or it could be maybe ten. It does seem a little bit excessive, but so you know, every voice is heard and every voice is acknowledged and we look into that. Any questions on this slide? Next slide, please. Um, so the evaluation of the request is completed by senior management staff based on passport feedback. Legal guidance, labor market, labor market conditions, and this is where we use the twelve uh, competitor agencies. That were the basis for our class income two years ago. So we are going back to those twelve agencies and asking those questions. What are you doing about this? What do you do about that? Um, and then there are some items that if they can be done administratively, we'll just go ahead and do them. So today, next slide, please. Today for board discussion, we would like to bring two items for your consideration. Um. The cost of living adjustment, which this year, the March to March CPI, the consumer price index, is at four point seven eight percent. The fiscal impact on work hours will be about two hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred dollars increase. And the other item is standby holiday pay. It was requested that for two specific holidays, Christmas and Thanksgiving. If we can um, increase the standby pay from the three hours that we currently pay to six hours. Um, this will have a minimal fiscal impact of about two thousand four hundred for those two holidays.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How long are they on standby for those days?
I'm sorry, how?
How long are the employees on standby?
The entire day.
Twenty-four hours.
Correct.
One employee is split up, like there's four employees in a.
We have, sorry, we currently found out five employees at any given time depending on the department.
Okay.
West Water has two uh, fields, uh, construction maintenance has one or two, and then we have production. Is that correct?
Yeah, primary, secondary and the water stand by.
Okay. And it's a twenty-four hour on call.
Yes, and this is what they get paid if they don't have to go in.
Correct. Just be on standby.
Yeah.
Um, so those are the.
That's a no brainer.
And is it time and a half pay or is the? It is, right, Danny?
That's correct.
Yes.
They, and I just made, I'm sorry, I'm very, they receive thirteen and a half hours of standby pay. Which is an hour and a half per day, weekday, three hours per weekend day. Um, if that weekend, weekday falls on a holiday. That one and a half turns to three hours. So. They go from Monday to the following Monday. They're here during the day, after hours to the following day is when they're on call and throughout their entire off time, Friday through through Sunday.
Thank you.
So they cited two items that I would like the board to consider if they have, if you have any questions.
Are we still doing, is the HR committee first meeting to go over this and then bring it or we?
We, we incorporated that into this meeting, knowing that we have more scheduled workshops. We incorporated that HR committee into this process. So all five board members will hear it the first time and then once we receive direction, then we would incorporate that in the budget.
And these are the only two things you brought forward out of our list?
Based on what we receive, input we received from the other twelve agencies, yes.
Okay. I, I mean, I. So just to give you some background where I'm at, I. Hospitality, you, it's three sixty-five. Um, I have always. Since I've been there, I close early for Thanksgiving and I close early for the Christmas, because those are two family holidays. And I think that um, having people on call for those days um. Takes away a benefit that the majority of peak workers have. You know, most people have off Christmas. They get to spend the entire day with their family. People who are in industries that have to work don't get that. They can't sit there at the Thanksgiving dinner and have three and four drinks with their family because they're going to be on call and they might have to drive. It's a no brainer to me, honestly. Um, I'm not, you're not asking for every holiday and every day, but for those two days, I personally. I, I, I think it's, it's reasonable.
I would venture to say I think eight hours is reasonable. Not what you're asking for, but to me, it seems reasonable for, and we're talking five employees, maybe six when the new plant comes on board and they're giving a lot and historically, we've had a lot of problems on Christmas. So I think they deserve that. Anyway, that's just my two cents.
I'm in favor of the holidays. How does that work if they're called in? Do they get that six hours plus?
He was going to explain how it worked.
I don't know if this is something you have off the top of your head, but do you know the last year that we did not do a cola?
We did a cola last year. It was, what me, what me to four point two percent.
Four point two. The year before that, I don't believe we did because it was less than three percent and we don't bring anything to the table unless it's over two percent.
Um, and typically, our other agencies, DWA and CBWD, they approved their call of prior to us.
So CBWD has a three-year MOU with their employees. I think it ends at the end of this year. And they are set to get a maximum of five percent in this year. And theirs is January to January, so theirs is implemented beginning of the year. So they, the employees have already gotten that. Whatever it was back in, because they use the September CPI, we use the March CPI, so they have already gotten the increase and our employees have noticed that. Um, DWA offers a March, um, March to March and they're, they have an employee association. And their MOU also allows for up to a maximum of five percent. So we're pretty much in line um, with the cola. And those two major agencies that are our main competitors.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I think these are reasonable.
Yeah.
If I can get direction from the board so we can have.
This will be on uh, May. This will be action?
Well, not necessarily action, just um, we would, we would like your thoughts on it so we can then put it into the budget and.
I, I'm okay with this.
Import, yeah, we would put the extra hours and then the cost of living increase in the budget numbers as we start bringing back and start bringing to you the operations.
I agree.
Out of all those requests, is there only two we're looking at them?
Yes. I think. Is there one that you would like us to tell you while we didn't move forward?
It's not your fault. My next statement isn't your fault, okay? I would have liked to have had this to think about. Prior to today. I understand it's a workshop, but you ask them for direction and I. Which time I've seen this? Yeah, it's a brush. So how am I supposed to give you a sound direction if I don't have time to think and read about it and understand what's going on?
Can I interject for just a second? It isn't our job to evaluate what the employees asked for. We are to evaluate the two items they asked for. That's it. None of the rest of it is our business.
Where do you come up with that idea?
The facts.
That's what they're bringing, because they're bringing forward.
Bringing two issues. That's all we're considering.
They brought, employees brought. A whole list of things.
Management and people we employ, management decided these two are the only issues we're discussing.
Well, there you go.
Great.
So what are we voting on then? Management already decided.
Two. We're saying, yes, we agree.
Well, you can say no.
Saying, yes, you agree. I'm saying, I don't agree.
Right. Yeah, that's one. The rest of us vote yes, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, yes.
No, I would.
I think we're.
Board president.
Item B.
I know that we're starting to run out of time and getting close to some, I know there's some other commitments that we have. So there are several items on the agenda that we can push until May, but there are some items that are specific to board requests. One of them would be the affiliations. List update as the board update.
Yeah.
Handbook update. So we would like to push everything except those two items to the May. Okay, workshop, if that's okay.
So item C sixty and item seven will push to May.
Yes.
Right, so we'll move on to item D, affiliation list update.
But it's fun, but we did have a slide on.
Behind us.
I'm sorry. Um, on the table, you're going to see the current affiliations list. Um, and as we're working on our, this for your twenty twenty-five budget, I wanted to make sure that we were budgeting enough for, especially for board travel. Mileage reimbursements, conference and event fees, and also the board compensation for the days of service. Um, you know, we've increased our, 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 some of our energies and we've been going out to a lot of new events, so I want to make sure that we're budgeting enough. Um, as we normally do, unless it's stipulated, our past practice has been to pay travel and entry fees to any board member wishing to attend events listed on our affiliation list. With only the designated board member receiving a day of service for the compensation. Some of the things that would make it more helpful for our staff would be if we were to be more per- prescriptive and list the individual events under each organizations. Uh, that would be something like, if you looked at the Aqua and Aqua JPIA. We might list the spring conference and expo, the fall conference, the region nine meetings and tours and webinars. Something like CSDA, we would be more specific and we would include the Leadership Academy. The annual conference and exhibitor showcase and then say webinars. But I really want to open that up to you as board members to look at this and to really be giving staff the guidance as to how you would like to move forward with this. Um, I've had a few board members question some of the meetings and why things are on the list and not on the list. And and that's why we really just wanted to bring it to you and to get your impact. Um, with that, I would like to open it up to board discussion. You can either choose to. Send your comments, you know, to director, to President Sewell and and General Manager Macy. Or you can give us feedback right now that we can incorporate for one of our upcoming meetings.
Yeah, one question I had is recently, in fact, I think it was in either this, last week or this coming week. Uh, you, uh, Robert and Ivan, going up, I believe, the Aqua or CSDA legislative symposium or legislative meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and I was told that the only, the two of them would be approved to attend because they're on the legislative. Um, however, according to this, it says all directors are pre-approved to attend these functions. And under uh, California Association, and that's um. All directors are pre-approved to attend Aqua and Aqua JPIA. And our California Special District Association, same thing, that you approve. But then you get down to assigned meetings. And where the legislative. Cover was legislative representation, Washington DC and California. So I'm assuming that what that means is uh, items that are occurring with the Washington. DC, the government, the federal government and the state government. Um, anyway, I was requested to go to the, the uh, legislative. One in in Sacramento that was. Was it Aqua?
It was Aqua, yes.
Aqua. And. The way I read this, that should have been open to all directors to attend. And I was told it wasn't, so we need clarification on things like that or this specifically and then any other confusion that may.
So I think your suggestion would help with that. And I think if it said specifically what the Aqua, Aqua JPIA and CSDA meetings were for all. Like you said, webinars and then the spring and fall conference, but then it. But then it would clarify that legislative ones would be just to those on the list like they were saying, right?
A lot, a lot of the organization, even DVBA and, and, and some of the ones that I'm on there, you have. Meetings where the subject matter is legislation, does that mean that? I can't go to those now even though I'm on the board of directors? That's what our Rancho Mirage meeting is, morning meeting is legislative and uh, uh, update, you know, legislative. So by. Other people's interpretation, they're the only two that should be going to that.
And that's why we're bringing this forward, because I don't want it to be a staff decision. I want this to be a board decision, it's the whole purpose for, for bringing this forward.
I don't take the, the DVBA legislative as just something that only I or he could go to, you're, you're the DVBA person.
I, I don't either.
The other, the Aqua and the CSDA, because they do involve the travel and the expenses. I, I think should kind of be limited, no offense, but I don't know that all, all five of us need to go to those things. Um, I think since we've increased the pay, we have to be a very cognizant of. How much we're spending, obviously, we're all getting paid a little more and so having. Everything just open the way it has been, I don't know that that's going to work anymore, especially given. The financial challenges that we have now with the Chrome six standards.
That wasn't, that wasn't really my point, my point was it should, it should.
Well, that's what, what I'm saying, so, so we have to be really prescriptive about this. In that I, for DVBA legislative, something like that, you're the DVBA rep. I don't know that I should be compensated if I go, even if it is legislative. I think you have a staff member that could be involved in that. Um, and so that would be a way of, okay, so you're going and you're doing the reporting and all that. But there's no need for all of us to go and get compensated for that, so that's kind of how I'm looking at it is. I don't, I don't think that uh, if I was to go, I, I don't believe that I should get paid for it. If I want to go for informational purposes, for my own purposes, that's okay.
And of course, there still is a, is a cost of the airfare and things like that hanging up there, but.
Well, I, I mean, for DVBA, there's no, it's just local, but, but for the other stuff, yeah, there is the, the airfare and the rest of that, and that's why, I mean. Kind of limiting those things, we, the Aqua and the conferences alone. Are kind of costly and now we've added CASA. Um, and so I think when I look at it as far as everybody going should be something where we're all learning together and, 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 and it benefits us, but. If we're not learning or it's not benefiting, I don't know that everybody should go, that's just how I look at it.
I agree, I agree.
Um, just speaking on that specific Aqua legislative. It was just one room and we were in the same room hearing the same thing, so I think there's some where. For this second set, you know, it is usually just the primary and then the alternate. So the Washington DC and California, I mean, the Washington DC specific, it was nice, I think that both of us win. But for like the Aqua ledge, I don't even think we should have two. I mean, I don't think we gained much more by us both being. Where if you go to an Aqua conference, there's six or seven different breakouts happening at the same time.
Conquer, split and conquer, yeah.
It makes sense that we're all there.
True, but also put into perspective if you are going, so for like CSDA where we're actually going to do meetings and you are probably going to want both because. You're not going to that one, are you?
Not this.
Okay.
I guess what I, what I'm trying to get at is the Washington DC trip might need to be split from Aqua ledge. You know, I, I don't know if that legislative slot that the two of us are on necessarily would cover. An Aqua or a CSDA ledge, that might need to be its own specific thing.
Well, yeah, so you could just put up here, you know, just the conferences and then when it comes to the, the ledge. And the CSDA ledge, they would be separate items. And then i- if we both wanted to go, yeah, uh, like.
We could.
And you could say exclude.
But if not, hey, you go, you go, which is kind of what it is.
Like excluding that sort of thing, right?
But I think for Aqua specific, I'd want to see the conferences and they have the region nine events. They've had that are local, I think that should be the five of us. And then what was the webinar? And then the CSDA, I know they've had before out towards. San Bernardino, I know they have similar regions like Aqua that. Um, but I forget.
I don't know what I remember, I think it's southern, yeah.
So should we just all individually go through and send our ideas in the interest of saving time? Because I know you guys have a lot going on, so I don't want to run anybody's meeting, but I, I.
But before we, we do that, could we maybe discuss some of the extra meetings um, that we have? I, in looking at the calendar, there's more and more and more things, right? And I keep seeing all of the networking stuff in addition to the actual meetings that take place. And I'm just wondering if we need to start talking about, and I just want us to think about it. Are these networking meetings? I think we have to ask ourselves, are these networking meetings benefiting the district to the point where it's worthy for us to be paid to be there? And I think we just need to kind of soul search and really ask ourselves those questions. Are those networking, the bowling nights, the drinking nights, the winery nights? Where it's not a meeting, it's just a social gathering, are those truly benefiting our district? I just want us to ask ourselves those questions and think about it.
Well, I would say uh, one of the things I've learned. Uh, about attending those meetings is, and the same thing with Aqua and CSDA and Urban Water Institute. Uh, because there are social functions mixed in with the, with the conferences. Is uh, the, one of the important things for the water district is building relationships with other agencies and other personnel. And I think you do that uh, um, that a lot of these mixers and network nights. You're building relationships with people that are, uh, for the Desert Valley Builders Association, for example. Who are involved in design and, and building of uh, neighborhoods and. And businesses that utilize water and wastewater services that we provide. And so I think building relationships, this is an important part that's. And again, some of the, some of, some of it isn't that valuable, but it just goes varies from meeting to meeting, uh, meeting, so.
I want to bring up, I mean, I noticed there's a Cvet morning meeting every month now on our list and I don't know that that adds a lot of value to us. And, and this, the economic forum or the economic summit, I think is worth it, but I don't know. I, 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 I don't think that we should be, again, I think we have to be aware of what, making sure that whatever we're doing. Is really beneficial, and so I noticed that popped up. Uh, Cvet morning meeting and I thought, well, you know, uh, stuff like that, I would prefer staff go. Uh, than us just to add another day of pay. Um, we have.
I think, I mean, depending who goes, I think it would be more cost effective if they didn't go. I mean, it depends, I think, I mean.
I'm not saying that they have to go, I'm just saying if someone's going to go, I would rather staff go than one of us go to. Uh, I was on the Cvet board and I, to be honest, I don't find that they really do a lot for us up here and so. Uh, I don't see any of us have, I don't see a benefit any of us going to this morning meeting every month. Um, other than just to get some cash, and so I, I don't, I don't want to see. Stuff added that's not really going to benefit us, I mean, we have to be really, really careful about. Where we're putting our money and then, you know, we're talking about a long-range financial plan and. We're talking about putting fixed costs on.
Interesting you mentioned Cvet, because I don't think I've ever been to one, Cvet meeting.
Have you ever been to Economic Summit?
I don't believe so.
That's, and that's, that's good because it gives you a lot of economic information.
That was an economic, uh.
That was for the county. That wasn't through Cvet, they do one in the fall.
I didn't even know that had been popped up on our calendar, and I saw it and I just thought, well. And it says we're all pre-approved to attend and I'm like, uh, yeah, I don't know.
I've read some of their, their information they post online and I said. It isn't, it isn't a meeting, it would generate my interest.
No.
So. Go ahead.
I just, I, I just, I, I don't think that that's something we should consider, I think if it's. I think, I think there's also some meetings that are probably on there. That maybe we should only think about if there's something specific to us.
Yeah, like the County Board of Supervisors. I found it so interesting when I attended how it was all a consent calendar and the only thing pulled for discussion, you probably noticed that. Everything's on consent, the only thing that gets pulled for discussion are whoever's in public there to speak. Or whoever on the board wanted a specific item pulled out. And then they don't even do staff reports on it, it's just the public comment and then they discuss it and it's done. And I thought that's, if, even if I had something on there, if I didn't specifically say I wanted to speak, I'm not going to hear any discussion on it. I found that kind of, it made it not really user-friendly as far as information is concerned.
Well, I think you reach out, uh, if it's an item like with public comments or things like that. You can submit a request or be, uh, speak online and they have a very excellent system for, for calling, people calling in and wanting to address. Um, the camp, the board of supervisors, so.
The day I went, twenty-five people complaining about the ballot.
Yeah, I know, I, I kind of. Yeah, and that's a public comment. And the last, the last meeting I had, they were complaining about the, the ballot procedure and some of them were on the.
Yeah.
Can I say something about this? I think that. Some of the meetings that we go to, we may have too many people, you mentioned the staff there, I. I've always said that since I've been here, we have a couple of staff members show up, we have three directors show up. I can understand it when a county board supervisor or somebody like that comes. We all need to be there, that's what I was told in the beginning, I all need to be there. So that hasn't seemed to be happening lately, when a county board supervisor shows up, Manuel Perez was at a meeting the other day that. Uh, General, Assistant General Manager Champion was at, I was at. The, the tour down there at the uh. Nancy Wright Treatment Plant. Someone, someone in Wallace, he was there. Where were you guys?
I was on a.
I have a job. Okay, uh, but I, I can't just leave for any meeting for, from my job.
You know, there's some of the, you guys tell me to get on an airplane and go. Place, but yet the meetings that are here in town, you weren't there. Uh, it, it just, so, we could tear, we could tear this all up and tell none of us have any meetings or just leave it alone and. And, and continue on, I think it's more productive to just leave it the way it's always been.
I don't want the public to ever be able to look at us as this being a grift. For us individually, I don't want the public being able to look at this list and look at our reports and look at what we get paid if they were to do a public request. And think that we're there to just get rich off of them, they can't afford to do most of these things that we are doing for their benefit. And if it's not for their benefit, we shouldn't be doing them, that's just my opinion. Anyway, thank you for letting me give my opinion.
Yes, you're quite welcome.
Any other discussion?
No.
If you want to send your notes to Brian and myself, we'll um. Come up with something for the May meeting. And we're skipping item seven, item eight, board handbook update.
Real quick, you do have a redline version of the handbook. At the, I think it was the March meeting or even the February meeting, we had uh, discussed the handbook and some edits. Specifically, um, we've made changes to the handbook in section three point oh one. Which is incorporating our new vision based on the strategic plan, section three point oh two incorporates our new values. And then in section four point oh one, I've added um, some language. And that is the, where it says the officers of the board consist of the assistant, consists of the president and vice president. And then we added this additional language, board members who wish to take on a leadership role within the board. Are strongly encouraged to complete the CSDA Leadership Academy and or any other leadership program. And I think that addresses some of the comments and concerns we've had about the Leadership Academy. But of course, if you'd like other language or anything else you'd like to add into that, we can do that. We will have to adopt this by resolution because it was previously adopted as by resolution, that's why I brought it to you here today. So if you have any other changes, we can have it reflected um, in those note materials.
Would you please read that last one about the, yes?
Um, we've got, I've added a sentence that says, board members who wish to take on a leadership role within the board are strongly encouraged. To complete the CSDA Leadership Academy and or any other leadership programs.
What does that mean to me?
There was comments at the March meeting that we were interested in making sure that our president or vice president. Attend some type of leadership training. Specifically at the time, it was requested that they do the CSDA leadership training. And then as a board, you've, you kind of backstepped and it was, instead we could put this in as strongly encouraged versus re- requiring it. Because if we required it, we could find ourselves in a situation where we don't have anyone with that specific training. So instead of saying it's required, we're just saying it's strongly encouraged.
Not required, but. So if you don't take this leadership training, you won't be able to have a leadership position here.
No, it doesn't say that, it just says strongly encouraged, it doesn't say that.
The requirement is we had previously requested, but what we had previously requested was that you would not be eligible if you did not get your leadership certificates. But the staff felt like there would be a situation where people like yourself didn't want to take the course and then you might want to be president next year.
People like myself who didn't want to take the course.
You didn't want to take the course, I, I understand you're taking it now and I'm really grateful, but you didn't want to take it.
I was going to do it online.
Okay.
You guys really need to start listening to what I'm saying instead of.
You got it.
Coming up with all your own conclusions about what I'm thinking. There's just no communication here. So thank you for, for that clarification, Assistant General Manager. That's a long name.
I'm sorry. He's an AGM.
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 And unless we have any other discussion on the handbook, I'll just say that um, this has come up on our agenda, I think twice now at a normal meeting. I hope next month we can finalize it, so please, if you do have any changes, look through this. If you have suggestions you want to see incorporated, please send them to Brian and myself and we have this. To hopefully approve at the May meeting.
Awesome.
Thank you. Item nine, General Manager Comments.
Just very simply, thank you everyone for participating today, we got a lot of good direction and that is the intent of this, not to vote on anything, not to give. A yes or no on a specific budgetary item, but to give us direction and we've got that today, so thank you very much to the board.
Thank you, Director's Comments, any uh, Director comments or requests for future agenda items, Director Martin?
Yes, sir. I, I've lived here within the district limits for fifty years. Every time I've asked a, a, a director a, a question in the past before being here, let's go see the. Uh, engineer. I didn't. Come to any meetings prior to me running for election. And the reason why, because I didn't think I was going to get any straight answers. I've been here a year and a half and I don't think I'm still getting the straight answers. I'm only going to vote on. What I read and comment on what I'm reading. I'm not getting any straight answers, it's.
Is it you're not getting straight answers or you're just yet getting answers you agree with?
Pardon me?
Is it you're not getting straight answers or you're not getting answers you agree with?
Only what's written down here and what's happening are two different things. I spoke, never mind, I don't know, I, I'll say that somewhere else, it, it just. I've been here fifty years. And I'm talking about just the time I'm here, I'm talking about prior to being elected. And now I'm elected and look what I had to do just to get the irrigation and these safety issues straightened out. It's just a fight. I got people here, they don't want me here. I wasn't the guy you wanted, I said this at the beginning when I got, you people don't want me here, I'm not the one you wanted elected. And I got a couple here sitting at this table that just want me right out the door, it's making life miserable. So I'm, I'm through with it, uh, either. I'm just going to do what I need to do, you guys can do whatever you like. So I can get, tell, I can get cooperation from. Management and. You know, i- i- get the answers, it, it, you heard one of our citizens here. He was confused about what was really going on with, with this, I, I don't know, guys do whatever you like, I'm telling you, I've been here fifty years, I'm not the only one that feels this way. That's all I have to say, thank you for listening.
Director Martin, any Director comments?
No.
Director Depp?
Just one, um, in previous conversation, it was brought to my attention that the city manager overrode an occupancy on one of our. Um, plum- plumbing plans and development plans that have come through. And our not approval got overridden when occupancy was given or the next steps was given by the city. I would like us to talk to legal and find out what we need to do to make sure that the city is aware that they, we will, we will not serve if they do not allow us to go through the proper process. I think him overstepping his bounds and, and not abiding by the, the water safety issues and allowing a project that's already in danger. Of polluting our environment to, to continue to have further standing and, and ignoring us. Is a big issue that we need to take a little more, uh, strong stand against, it's just my. It's just my, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Griffin?
Well, I was not aware of anything, we'll have to talk, that's all I have.
And I have no comments, so this meeting is adjourned.